Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, or good morning, depending where you're joining us from. And welcome to our webinar today. Next slide, please. So, welcome back to our Flourishing at Work webinar series. This is session five for Flourishing Strategies: Thinking Outside of the Box with Dr. Michelle Zechner. This webinar is sponsored by the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center, or MHTTC. We are housed at Rutgers in the School of Health professions and the Department of Psychiatric Rehabilitation and Counseling professions. My name is Scotty. I'm the project coordinator of this center. I will be introducing the webinar center and our presenter. Next slide, please. The MHTTC is funded by SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, to enhance the capacity of the behavioral health and other related workforces to deliver evidence-based and empirically supported practices to individuals with mental illnesses. We ask that you please visit the MHTTC Network website for additional information at mhtcnetwork.org. Next slide, please. And if you're interested in staying up to date with the events and products in Northeastern Caribbean, MHTTC is providing. We ask that you please sign up to receive our email communications. And you can do so by signing up at the bit.ly link that you see on the screen, and I will include in the chat box as well. Following the webinar, you'll be asked to complete a survey. We value this feedback and use this feedback to improve our activities and inform our future activities. These surveys are also important because our continued funding is linked to the completion of these services. So, we thank you in advance for completing them. Next slide. We also want to let you know that this webinar is being recorded and will be posted to our website along with the PowerPoint slides within seven days of this webinar date. Next slide, please. This presentation was prepared for the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center under a cooperative agreement from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA. All material appearing in this presentation, except that taken directly from copyrighted sources, is in the public domain and may be reproduced or copied without permission from SAMSA or the authors. Citation of the source is appreciated. We ask that you not reproduce or distribute this presentation for a fee without specific written authorization from the Northeastern Caribbean Mental Health Technology Transfer Center. At the time of this presentation, Marion Delphine Britton served as Assistant Secretary for Mental Health and Substance Use at SAMSA. The opinions expressed herein are the views of the presenters and the speakers and do not reflect the official position of the Department of Health and Human Services, or SAMSA. No official support or endorsement of the HHS or SAMSA for the opinions described in this presentation is intended or should be upheld. Next slide, please. We ask that you interact with our presenter during the webinar by using the chat feature. We ask that you please post any comments or questions you have in the chat, and I will collect your questions as we go and ask them of the presenter during the Q&amp;A time towards the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. The MHTTC Network website uses affirming, respectful, and recovery-oriented language in all activities. This is language that is strength-based and hopeful, inclusive in accepting of diverse cultures, genders, perspectives, and experiences, healing-centered and trauma-responsive, and invites individuals to participate in their own journeys. We also use language that is person-first and free of labels, nonjudgmental and avoids assumptions, and language that is respectful, clear, understandable, and consistent with our actions, policies, and products.
And I'm going to jump in. Thank you so much, Scotty. I'm Michelle Zechner, and I'm an assistant professor at Rutgers Department of Psych Rehabilitation and Counseling professions. I've been working in the areas of mental health and wellness and self-care strategies for over 15 years. And my work has been mostly around helping people with mental health conditions, their family members, and the staff who support them. So, without further ado, I'm just going to move forward here. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I'm so glad to have some, I imagine, some friends back in this session. This is number five out of six, a series of six webinars on flourishing. And if you missed some, or you'd like to go back to them, they are on our website. And so, today, actually, I welcome you to think about this idea of creativity and flourishing, which I have had so much fun with, and I hope to engage you all as well. Thinking outside the box, you know, I have cats. I don't know, you know, I assume many of us have pets. But I have cats, and when you think about cats, you're always like, no, you need to think about being inside the box, right? Or cats think that they need to be in a box if you have them. But for us, for our lives, thinking outside the box is actually really, really healthy. And I've decided to call that creativity. And it turns out that there's really quite a link between creative thought and actions and our well-being and flourishing, because there's sort of these creative thoughts and actions lead to flourishing or growing and expanding in our lives. There are a number of benefits of creative thinking, which we're going to go over a little bit, including on our health, our ability to be resilient, and our emotional well-being. And lastly, we're going to talk about the strategies and actions, the tiny and small ones even, that can encourage creativity in our lives that will ultimately lead us towards flourishing. So, when I was putting this series together last fall, believe it or not, it was almost, it was about six or eight months ago. I had a vision of all the interesting and creative ways that we can flourish, that are, you know, sort of all the different threads, if you will, that kind of connect flourishing and creativity for us. In this series, we've talked so far about flourishing and prioritizing ourselves by letting go of some of the overwork or concern and focusing more on the things that we care about and value. And we've talked about maintaining healthy positivity. The topic of outside-of-the-box flourishing really is one of my favorites, because it allows us to include some of this lightheartedness and exploration of play, which we'll talk about a little later, which is a concept in positive psychology for adults, not just children. I think this session today could be an entire six-week series, but lucky or unlucky for you. It's only one. But I, of course, invite you to check out the resources and the references that I've included, so that you can have a little more sense. If you're like me and you love to think about this idea of creativity. All right, so, let's keep moving here. I just, I found this quote on the internet. I really liked it. "The idea is that creativity is the act of turning new and imaginative ideas into reality. Creativity is characterized by the ability to perceive the world in new ways, find hidden patterns, and making connections between seemingly unrelated phenomena and generate solutions. Creativity involves two processes: thinking then producing." Now, that quote really caught me, because I know that in helping professions, which we all, I'm assuming most of us are helping in our work life and probably in our personal lives, we are constantly coming up with creative ideas. If you are like me and a caregiver and running against issues and challenges that arise in caregiving, we often have to come up with the most unlikely ways to solve problems, whether it's a student in a classroom or it's a client in a mental health setting. It really doesn't matter. We are often the chief problem solvers. And in fact, some of you may have checked out our podcast series that I've done with Tony Zipple, and he describes himself as chief problem solver, which I really love that. At any rate, I mean, I just want to point out, what other work could I possibly be doing where I could include silly graphics of disco balls looking like cherries or multicolored lemons? I don't know. This is just about the best thing in the world for me. It's a perfect fit for my strengths. And we're going to talk about strengths next time in our final session as well, your strengths and how they can help you with flourishing. So, what I thought about this idea of creativity is it really kind of got me thinking about there are these two realms of it, right? There's the thinking about creative thoughts, and then there's the producing, there's the action or the movement of something creative. And some of the articles that I read actually suggested that we shouldn't use the word creativity as a noun. We should say, really use it as an adjective, such as creative thought or creative action, which I thought was kind of interesting. And I'll, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But some other ways to consider creative thinking, it's related to effective problem-solving, adaptability, which is a lot like resilience, right? Diverse indicators of success, and different ways of thinking about health, learning, development, and growth. It's these actions we can take, right? That we are thinking or doing something that's outside the box. And being creative, it turns out, can really serve as a foundation to well-being in our lives and flourishing. So, I found a wonderful article. I encourage you, if you're like me and you love to read scientific articles, maybe you're not like me, maybe you think, thank you, Michelle, that's not really what I enjoy doing. And I'll skip it then. Don't do that. You know, do your own path. Think outside of the box. But everyday creativity, so this article was really, really interesting by Connor and her colleagues. Basically, what she did is she wanted to understand, did creativity help flourishing, or did flourishing help creativity? Like, which way did it go? And her research really suggests that if you do something creative today, you're likely going to have an improved mood tomorrow. So, in a way, it's like an investment, like it's a bank. You're depositing through creativity. You're depositing some resilience, some positive energy, some activation, and actually, you feel it tomorrow. And the way she did this is she interviewed 650 young adults in New Zealand and the US and asked them to complete these online diaries for 13 days. And they asked, you know, how much time they'd spend in creative endeavors each day? Like, what, you know, what kinds of things have you done creatively? And about their well-being in general. Interestingly, the results showed that people engaged in more creative activities than usual, more than usual. Like, some people, not me, but some people are just creative all the time, 24/7. Some of us, it takes a little more effort and work, right? But for those of us who push it up a notch, wherever our baseline is, we are flourishing more on the next day. So, the idea is that creativity can actually help improve our mood. It can improve our problem-solving. It can support our resilience. And then there's a whole interesting level of research on immune functioning. And some authors have really thought about how this idea of doing creative arts improves positive affect or mood. And then that positivity helps our well-being, and well-being improves our immune functioning. And there's some research along the lines of, I think there was one study that I glanced at that looked at journaling for folks living with HIV, and they found that actually there were changes in their immune system as a result of a consistent journaling practice that was focused on, like, something like the three good things. So, I think that this is kind of an interesting area of research and thought. And I encourage us all to be investigators in our own lives. What would happen if you say, we're a little more creative today? How might you feel tomorrow? And of course, I had to think about this as, so, I had to understand it. I have to understand everything and understand the influence between creativity and influence. So, there's a really great article. I've used in this series a lot of materials from the Greater Good Science Center at UC Berkeley, and they have something called the Greater Good Magazine. And I highly recommend it, if you're interested in these topics. And there was one article that I really liked that helped me think through this idea of creativity and flourishing. Basically, that being creative means that sometimes we allow ourselves to disconnect. And I know the next bubble is attention. But in a way, being creative means that you're taking time, you're thinking through, you're taking a step back, which we'll talk more about, but you're giving yourself a pause, more or less, not on anything action-based. And then it actually improves your focus and attention, which improves your executive functioning, things like planning, making goals, things like that. And the more we do the planning and making goals, then that builds our motivation, and then we are more likely to experience well-being and flourishing. I know, that's a lot of science. But I thought it was pretty darn cool, and I thought we should definitely know some of the science behind it, because, you know, a lot of times, positive psychology is a little bit like, oh, whatever. But there's a lot of science that backs up some of these ideas, which have sort of implication for ourselves, because it turns out that there's a lot of evidence that points to the idea that being creative, and we're going to talk about that, because I'm not talking about, like, being, you know, an artist or musician, although that definitely counts. But having creative thoughts as well, or other kinds of actions, is really the secret to maintaining our actions for flourishing, because we've been talking about how to build flourishing. And sometimes, we can get tired, and we need to motivate ourselves. And these ideas of creativity can really push us forward into a different ways of doing things and feeling more motivated to continue. So, for a moment, I'd like to switch now to the benefits of creativity. It is highly beneficial, as I've just mentioned, some of the ideas of why it's beneficial to think about creativity. And I think Hochschild came up with this idea. He called magnified moments. And these magnified moments are these times when we're really engaging. And it's sort of, I think about it a little bit like Mahaly Chiximahi, another positive psychologist. He talks about this idea of flow. When you're really into something, when you're really enjoying it, you're using your strengths and resources, that is really highly, highly effective in helping you flourish and highly effective in making you enjoy your work. The idea with magnified moments is similar in my thinking, but it's really how we can use those creative thoughts and actions to expand our perspective and sense of meaning that may be more helpful in flourishing. And so, connecting to our sense of meaning in our lives and at work actually builds our sense of well-being and life satisfaction. We had a whole session on finding our purpose, like, why am I doing this? Remember, if you saw it, if you haven't seen it, you may want to check it out of finding your purpose. And in helping professions, you know, often, that sense of purpose and values, that's why we do the work that we do. And when we can combine that sort of sense of meaning and purpose with some kind of creativity and helping others, like getting sort of a little bit, I don't know about you all, but sometimes I get lost in my head, my thoughts in my life. And when I can take a step back and really think bigger into meaning and values, it really becomes a more meaningful, I don't want to say that, but meaningful moment, darn it. And there it is. So, and I imagine that we've all had this experience. Have you ever had that moment where you're helping someone? And you're, feel free to drop it in the chat, if you like. When you've helped someone in your workplace that it really felt so meaningful? And I could share with you, you know, an example for me is I've done a lot of consultation at the New Jersey State Psychiatric Hospitals. And there have been times I've been on the units, I've facilitated groups, I've interacted with, you know, staff and people served. And some of the most meaningful and magnified moments were when I was really engaging with someone in sort of a deep conversation on the unit. And that really, really sticks with me, and it has stuck with me. And I imagine that you all have had that experience as well. And someone has reached out and said, yes, I've had that experience too in supporting others. There are ways that we can do this through more intentionality, I would say. Things like being aware in the moment of creative, being creatively aware of how we can help our colleagues. The pandemic has been brutal on all of us. And I think that we're all in helping professions. We're still sort of in the midst of it. I know, I imagine that we are all still recovering from the pandemic experience, from working through the pandemic. And a lot of these magnified moments might come from helping our colleagues, checking in, you know, at the end of the day, how you doing, reaching out, if you haven't heard for a while, from someone to make sure they're doing all right, or helping them in some other more tangible way. Maybe they, you know, have a situation and they need coverage or whatever. But that simple act, and then really kind of seeing it, stepping outside of your normal comfort zone or something that you would normally do, and attributing some kind of meaning to it really will benefit you and your sense of flourishing. Some other examples that I was reading about, which I thought were, I have participated in them. I don't know if any of you did any birthday parades in the last two years, where someone that you, you know, have been involved with had a birthday and you couldn't have a party, but people lined up in their cars and had signs and crazy, you know, balloons and streamers and whatnot, and they drove past the person's house to wish them a happy birthday. I just get chills thinking about it. So, this is how we've, you know, our new way of connecting that's a little bit more creative. And I think that that's, you know, sort of the interesting gift of the pandemic is that it has forced us as a culture, as social beings, to learn new ways to interact with people. And then lastly, Zoom celebrations. I'm just remembering, you know, some people have retired where I work, and, you know, people have had birthday celebrations. And so, finding ways that are outside of our normal, everyday way of doing things that feel like they're meaningful and purposeful and contributing to others and help you connect with others, whether it's at work or at home. All of those things can really, really help you flourish. And you may have done some things as well. And I see someone has dropped in the chat that they have also really found ways to connect and support their colleagues. And I think that in some ways, we're kind of in the trenches together. You know, the work that we do, helping others, is very specialized. And it means sometimes that, you know, our friend, other friends outside of the profession, or, you know, our significant others or family, they don't necessarily know what's going on. I mean, they may sympathize, but to have sort of a true sense of connection and meaning, it may be really helpful to have these kind of deep conversations, or at least check in with colleagues. So, and I think that intentional reminders, like quotes, or music, or people that are, who are creative, can promote our sense of flourishing. They can really sort of be that perfect storm, a good storm, a good storm of creativity in order to further these magnified moments. So, let's talk for a moment about creativity myths. And I'm reading, I was just reading a book about, you know, I read a lot of goofy stuff, but I was, basically, the author was saying, I was thinking about Aladdin and this, you know? And I thought, oh, wow, okay, there are a lot of myths about creativity, that only certain personality types can be creative, or only right-brained people can be creative. Have you heard any myths about who can be creative or what creativity is that you're sort of like willing to challenge at this point? Because I'll tell you, I've grown up, my family, my mother is a professional musician. I have aunts and uncles who are artists. So, I have never felt like a very creative person. I never thought of myself in that way. And then, at one point, you know, doing all of these sort of strength surveys, it was like, do you have interest, you know, do you have interest in ideas and thinking outside the box and coming up with new ways of doing things? I'm like, yes, absolutely. And I was like, oh, that's how I'm creative. And then I was, you know, talking to a student of mine recently, and they were telling me about enjoying making Easter baskets for their family and the creativity of selecting the baskets and what goes in the baskets, and the joy that they felt of the creation. And that's creativity. It may be how, well, we're going to come up with some other ideas. But do you have any other things that you, you think you might be creative in that's sort of non-traditional? Thank you. I think we have to acknowledge that we all have creative thoughts and ideas and actions, all of us do. And our strengths for that creativity might lay in different arenas. So, please, never ask me to draw you a picture, because that level, that kind of creativity is not my strength. I mean, I could draw you a picture, but you would not, it would be like, hmm, all right, Michelle, this is very, very odd. It's a blob. But I think that we have to see that as a strength, that we all have that inside of us. Because there was an author, his name is Jonah Lehrer, and he wrote this book called Imagination. And he cautions that creativity isn't a single gift possessed by the lucky few, which makes me feel better. It's a variety of distinct thought processes. It's also stuff that's in your brain that we can all learn to use more effectively. So, we have to use our imaginations for a moment to consider that creativity is about how we think, not necessarily what we create. And that believing in our own creativity actually makes us more likely to take creative action. If, you know, as I have done for many years, thinking that I'm not creative in my own ways, that can interfere with a sense of imagination and problem-solving. As I was searching the literature for putting these things together, creativity and flourishing, I found some fascinating research on some of the actions that support flourishing. One example that caught my eye was an article on the value of baking bread. I don't know if any of you have ever tried baking bread. I have tried. I'm not very good at it, but, you know, I have tried it. It's hard. It takes time and skill. But one researcher suggested that bread baking during the pandemic was really critical to their flourishing and offered opportunities for flourishing in the following ways. And I want to share this with you, because it sort of illustrates the point that creativity can be really different for different people. So, bread making offered three meaningful components for this person. One, it literally provided them food sustenance, like, you're going to eat it, right? Also, it helped that person, because for a while, we were kind of stuck at our houses, right? And so, it filled this need for newly available time for hobbies and leisure. And it also offered a way to use strengths. So, I think it really is a great example of a new hobby or recreational activity, or however you want to describe it, that helped the author cope during challenges in a meaningful way. Just as making music, many, I'm sure many of the folks on this webinar or watching it at some point are musicians or musically talented. That is definitely an act of creating, right? And journaling. So, journaling, there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of different ways a person can journal. So, you know, in the realm of flourishing, we've probably talked about the three good things activity. And that's really part of the journaling is either it's a gratitude journal or it's the three good things that have happened in the day. Really powerful stuff that has a lot, a lot of evidence that suggests that it influences our perspective and our ability to flourish. And of course, drawing and art is another example of things that have been studied that show that they actually contribute to flourishing. Is there anything else that you might do that is part of your flourishing strategy that is creative? So, anything that you've done, and you can put that in the chat if you feel like it, anything that you've done that is creative and a creative action that really supports your flourishing? I will say, oh, great, okay, painting with watercolors, very nice, very nice. Oh, baking, painting, nice. Thank you very much. That's great. Needle work and crochet, wonderful. We have a lot of people who are incredibly creative with their hands, and that's, that's just awesome. I really, that is really very cool, very cool. Thank you, thank you. And organizing the house. I wish, you know, some of that creative energy needs to come my way. It's not my strength. I have others, but that's not one. Ah, wow, a built-in bookshelf, really cool. And journaling, thoughts and reading professional development books. Thank you very much, everybody. Yeah, so, there are a lot of different ways you can do this, and they keep coming in, puzzles. So, finding that thing that really speaks to you, that gives you a sense of joy, know that when you do these things, you are investing in your own sense of flourishing. So, creativity really starts with your thoughts. Challenges at work can get us stuck, maybe make us feel like we can't solve a problem or increase our challenges. What if we consider challenges as opportunities for encouraging ourselves to think outside of that normal box of solutions? Oh, boy, I say that, and I'm like, for anyone who's worked in mental health, you can just be like, oh, big eye roll here. Because, yeah, it's, that's what we say to the people we help all the time. You know, a challenge is an opportunity, you know? But when we have to turn it to ourselves, sometimes that can be really challenging. You know, a a challenge is an opportunity, you know, but when we have to turn it to ourselves, sometimes that can be really challenging. And normalize the struggle. I was thinking about this uh thinking outside the box. And thinking, I was thinking, I don't know if anyone has seen that movie Forty First Dates. But in the character Drew Drew Barrymore's character uh has had a brain injury and. She, her whole family twists it in town, twists itself around to try to protect her. And they sort of relive the same day over and over and over. And then what happens is a young man comes along, falls in love with her and he. Takes her on a date for forty forty days in a row and it's a first date every time. And the creative solution, I don't, well, maybe you'll, maybe you haven't seen that movie. I don't want to. To bust the bubble, but the young man comes up with a really great uh solution for how to address. How to creatively help this young woman live a a full, normal life. Despite her short-term memory loss. So thinking about how can we overcome the the challenges that we experience. In our lives, we also have to take breaks. Of course, I had to have a cat in here. I have three and, you know, none of mine are that big, but I. You know, we all need to take a break and we need to normalize the struggle. Like it is hard. We we struggle sometimes. Another way to think about uh creativity to kind of bubble it up a little bit more for us. Is to become the outsider. And I, what I mean by that is imagine that you're walking in your home for the first time. Look around, what do you see? A lot of cat hair. Oh, no, I mean, what do you see? And that can really, and and if you think about the work challenges that you might be experiencing. Is there a way to step back from it for a moment to see the opportunities as well as the difficulties? And then revisiting the childhood. There's a really interesting uh study that I I looked at. That a researcher explored what, what would undergraduate students do? Uh and they wanted to measure creativity and they sort of said to the the students, okay, and these are, you know, twenty, twenty-five-year-old students. And they said, if you had a day off, what would you do? That was, you know, one, one uh. Uh group. And the second group was, if you had a day off and you were seven years old, what would you do? And can you imagine, not surprisingly, they found that the seven, you know, if you imagine yourself as a seven-year-old. You're more likely to be creative, which is really interesting. You know, and and I think, I think I I definitely resonate with that. I don't know if anyone here resonates with that or anyone watching resonates with that. When you had a snow day and in grade school, what an opportunity, what a joy. You know, you could do anything, right? And now as an adult and I have a snow day, I'm like, can I sleep in? Which, which is important. Sometimes we need to sleep in. But sometimes, you know, it would be really great to try to bake bread or crochet or do a puzzle or. Uh try out a new dance or something like that. So a lot of ways to kind of shake loose some creative thoughts. In this way. Also, it's really about being aware and noticing. What's going on and with time and exploration. Because we don't always give ourselves that time and we don't always have the time to pause. But really letting ourselves have some time and space is valuable to be more creative. And I remind myself of that. I try to give myself about five minutes of stare out my window time. I know that sounds really awful, doesn't it? But it's actually not awful. I'm judging myself, but staring out the window or daydreaming or. Just allowing some space. Maybe it's when you're in your car driving to work. Maybe it's between, you know, students or people that you support or patients or clients or whatever. Maybe you give yourself a breath and you just see what happens. Also, you can surprise yourself. Try something new. Try something you've never done before. Maybe that's, you know, take a a a new and different bus. Down the street, maybe it's if you're driving to work, you try a different route for something different. Maybe you normally go on the highway home and you stop and you get off on an exit just to see what's there. Because that that also really helps build our sense of opportunity and creativity, which can lend itself to flourishing. And lastly, reflect, you know, we've talked a lot about reflection, how it really supports flourishing in so many ways to reflect on our. Our practice and and helping people, but it can also really reflect. Uh sorry, it can really help our sense of purpose and meaning and building more flourishing. So let's talk about outside of the box flourishing at work. Creative thinking is powerful. It's active. It assumes you can adapt the way you think. And in the helping professions, we adapt, as I mentioned before, every day, all day. I I feel like that's. Part like if you're in a helping profession, that has to be your number one skill is adaption, adapting to what's going on. There's a really great uh Ted Talk, I included it the end of this. Webinar by uh Tina Selig from Stanford. She suggests that we can get caught up uh at work to think of ourselves in what she calls as puzzle builders, right? So we we know whatever job we do, you know, and if we're helping people, we're sort of got all these pieces. We've got clients or the people, they're. Students or our patients or whatever we're calling the people that we help. And we've got to, you know, help them in some way, physically, educationally, mental health-wise, whatever. And there are all these blocks, right? And because I'm thinking already in my head, I'm starting to laugh because I'm thinking about. All the time I've ever helped people, I've been, you know, working in helping professions for. A while and I I'm laughing because I'm thinking. I've been really challenged so many times. I've done case management, I've done outpatient services. You know, I've done guardianship work. I've done a lot of different things. And I'm thinking, how many times have I been incredibly challenged to help somebody? And there's no resource that fits that particular need. Whatever that need is, they, it's not available and I have to have had to be creative. And I've seen so many of my colleagues be creative. In how they think about solving those problems. And have you ever been in that situation where you're missing some of the pieces that you need to do your work well? A service, technology, resource, or product that's missing from the world? And then you did something to make the magic happen. So. Selig's point really is just that we have to think of ourselves as creators, not just puzzle builders. But as people who are able to connect and combine ideas. We also have to challenge our assumptions sometimes. I know, you know, I support a lot of folks uh who are, live with mental health conditions. Constantly have to challenge my assumptions of what people are capable of, because people are usually capable of. A lot more than I or any of the, you know, supporting uh professionals around them think they are capable of. So. Being able to challenge assumptions, go beyond the first right answer and tolerate ambiguity. I mean, that's challenge. I I think that we in the helping professions, more than any other group. Have a lot of ambiguity. It's a lot of uncertainty about what's gonna happen. We improvise, we find workarounds, right? We make amazing things happen for those we help by going beyond what exists and that is, I think, our superpower. So that's my little platform. I'll step down off now. Thank you very much. But remember, you are using a superpower every day when you help people. I was also really interested in thinking about flourishing. I've done a a lot of research um in movement and and physical activity. And how that helps people build their sense of efficacy. It builds their sense of uh positivity. And good emotions that reduces depressive symptoms. It's, and I'm not talking about aerobics every day. I'm talking about just standing up and doing something. I was looking for some silly uh examples. I can't imagine anyone jumping. Up on a desk and doing a all-out flash mob. But maybe, I mean, maybe, maybe, I don't know, not even sure I could get up there. So. But thinking about things like stretching, uh walking, dancing, shaking, humming. Any other ideas that you have about physical movement that could, is creative and could support your flourishing? So feel free to drop those into the chat. Any ideas you have about. The type of physical movement that would actually contribute to your flourishing. And the great thing, and there's just so much evidence that we have to get up, we have to stand up. I mean, I'm a desk worker. And I have to remind myself to stand up, set alarms to stretch. Now, we do have, I, we, the MHTDC, uh we do have a great series of videos that I did. I helped, I should say, we did. Um I worked with a a friend of mine who's a physical therapist. A bunch of us contributed. Katy is a star in in some of the videos. We had a lot of fun putting them together, but they are simple stretches that you could consider doing as a helping profession. Just as a break, like maybe you need to stretch your neck or maybe you need to stand up and. Maybe there's something you need for your low back because you've been sitting too long. So really thinking outside of the box. To make sure that your physical movement is uh active enough. Oh, wow. Okay, awesome. So someone is is put in the chat that they walk to and from work. I'm so jealous. I had a job like that once. And I think that's amazing. And walking the long corridors. I I always joke, like, for some reason, you know, a lot of these these places, institutions where I've worked. You know, it's like, it feels like it's a ten or fifteen-minute walk to go from the car to where I sit. Which feels like a big, long journey when it rains or snows. But in reality, it's great for me and I arrive and I've got more blood flow to my brain. I feel more creative. And someone also said, it's like, thank you very much. So just remember that uh actually standing up, moving around. Can be really powerful to build your creativity because it energizes you and it can reduce some sort of, uh, you know. It it's good for you in a lot of ways. I think we all know that. So purpose and meaning, uh being creative. Thinking outside of the box and flourishing, going back to that sense of purpose and meaning and. The connections that we have in our lives. It actually builds our sense of well-being and life satisfaction and ultimately. Our flourishing. These strategies could be connecting to your values or your faith or to nature. Or exploring whatever your sense of connection to something outside of yourself. So using these creativity to make these connections and build a flourishing foundation. I also put in um this si- this uh picture of Ikigai, which I think we talked about. In the finding your purpose uh session that we talked about. And that's a Japanese notion of. This intersection of doing what you love, what the world needs, what you're good at and what you can get paid for. That it that's pretty profound. Um and spending that time of reflecting on the purpose of your work. Again, always important. I also think practicing self-compassion is really critical, whoever you are. And especially if you help others be very tender um with yourself because we do hard work and it is exhausting. And then these, again, intentional reminders of creativity, of flourishing. Of of how we can get at uh more fun things uh every day. And lastly, well, I shouldn't say lastly, but the last idea, I want to leave, you know, kind of leave you with, we're gonna go on to some other ideas, but. The last major idea about creativity is this idea of play or being lighthearted. In our daily activities at work, in our social connection. It's so important for our sense of well-being. To build a sense of meaning, building positive emotions, creativity, engagement and achievement. So taking a break and building in some time to play can make you more productive. I was trying to. Give you an example and so I bought these really ridiculous uh sunglasses and now, of course, I can't find them, but they they look like toucans. And I wear them once in a while to remind myself, like, don't take yourself so seriously, Michelle. So and don't take the world so seriously because there are toucan sunglasses because sometimes I have to go there. And you may have something like that. You may have slinkies at your desk or you may have. Hulu girl, you know, Hulu shaker or you may have. Fun, creative things um in your car, on your desk. You may have playful earrings. You may find other ways to express play. Oh, nice. A a a dance competition. Very good. That is awesome. That is awesome. So these are some fun things that we can do that really build up our sense of creativity and play. I do want to uh be serious for a moment and say that. I know that there are a lot of challenges to creative thoughts and actions, especially now. There's just so much going on and. For folks who are experiencing burnout or exhaustion or grief. The call to be creative, it may feel like one more thing and it may feel like now is not the time. But I would encourage all of us to consider that sometimes outside of the box, thinking for flourishing. When we're in those spaces and places means resting, giving ourselves permission to rest when we wouldn't normally give ourselves that permission. Finding ways to replenish ourselves, whether that's, you know, grabbing that ice cream cone or. Sitting on a park bench, uh just looking at the world go by and having a lot of self-compassion. I I saw something the other day that on social media that caught my eye. And it was like, uh you want to do something for your, for yours, like your, I don't, I forget what it was. I think it was like, I, if you want to do something for your mental health today. Take out the garbage. And I was like, what? And then I read it and it was basically like, sometimes you just have to take some kind of action. In order to be a support to yourself and sometimes that outside of the box, it might mean taking out the trash. Or the recycling uh or. Doing whatever you need to do uh one step at a time and seeing that as just one step outside of where you were previously. So let's talk about some external supports that can help creative uh thinking and actions. Changing up our routine. Um maybe you drive a different way home. Maybe you take a different bus. Maybe you get on the train and just see where it takes you. Using fun pens, always fun or having, you know, interesting things on your desk. Listening to music while you're at work uh that sort of makes you, you know, move your head or move your body or. Just feel a certain kind of way that can help us think about creativity. I'll I'll give you, maybe I, uh one thing that I I do in my family, when we get takeout, we often listen to the music of. The place where we eat. So we have a Greek restaurant. We listen to traditional Greek music. There's a. There's an Indian, South Asian, Indian restaurants. And we'll listen to classical Indian music. And it's always eye-opening. It's always very interesting to experience those cultures through music. I find anyway. Um and of course, desk toys. I'm gonna show you my desk toy. I don't know if you can see it. It's a little fidget thing that I really like. So I like to fidget while I'm um talking and while I'm thinking, because it. Helps my creativity bubble up. And I'm sure there are a lot of things you do to shake it up for yourself as well. So I wanna kind of leave you with this idea that. Doing something creative today helps you flourish tomorrow. So anytime you could step outside of that box and sometimes that box. Of uh is is just all in our head of what we always do. It's sort of like doing the same thing every day. That's fine and we have our routine. But what happens if we step outside of it? What happens if we just decide, you know what, it is Tuesday, but I'm gonna go out to lunch. Shake it up a bit. Or maybe it's um, you know, whatever it is. And I think you could think of a thousand things. That might be a little bit different for you. Hosting a da- dance party, for example, going for a bike ride. Doing something and knowing that you're investing in your flourishing tomorrow. And I took this picture this morning uh where I am. I I, it's pretty gray and um. Lot of brown happening because, you know, of the time of year, but I saw these bright little purple cro- cro- crocuses, I think they are. And they made me smile because I thought, wow, there's a little bit of creativity and color and joy and flourishing happening. Right in my little world that if I hadn't really stopped to take a picture and think about it, I was like, oh, this is, this is great. This is great for my topic today. But in summary, creative thinking and actions really do support our health and flourishing. And remembering that we can all be creative in our thoughts and actions. Sometimes it's gonna be. A playful creative thought or action and sometimes it's gonna be a self-care creative thought or action. Using creativity at work supports our problem solving, which we have to do every day and can increase our work satisfaction. And the strategies that we can use to increase creativity um and flourish are so varied. I mean, I just gave you some examples that I thought of and I can imagine that there'd be a whole contingent of folks who'd be like, well, there are book clubs, there are crochet. There's playing with grandchildren. There's a whole list of things that I left off. Uh and that's the beautiful thing about creativity because we all have it and we all will use it in different ways. So the practice opportunity for this week, you know, every week, um when I've done these, I've tried to think about what we can do. To um. apply some of the ideas that we've talked about. So thinking outside the box. So my question for you to consider is, how can you build one everyday creative action into your work life? And again, I don't mean like you're, you know, pay, and, and maybe it means for you, you know, painting a picture to express your thoughts at work. Maybe that's it. It could be that. It could also be, you know, making sure your desk toy is at the front and ready. It could mean, you know, anything. So I'd, I'd love to hear if you wanna put some thoughts in the chat about how you might build one everyday creative action into your work life. Someone has given a comment that the idea of creativity is great because it allows us to see possibilities when we feel stuck. Absolutely. Thank you so much for bringing that up because in thinking about getting unstuck from challenges, when we allow different options to come up to our head, went, to our minds, when we are more adaptable in our thinking, that really can relieve some of our frustration. Because again, our superpower is being adaptable, helping others and, and being flexible. And knowing that, that you're going to find some, some way out of the situation that you're in. It may not be the way that you thought. It may not be the first thing that you thought of, but it might be about the twentieth or so. And that's okay. That's okay. So we have one more session in the series and that's kind of a tie it all together plan, build your resilience plan. And it's gonna, we're gonna be talking about using your strengths and your superpowers, which you have. And kind of a wrap-up from all of the, of the sessions that we had in the series. And that'll be April 19th. I hope you can join us. And I wanna open it up to questions at this point. Katy, I don't know if we had any questions. You could feel free to drop them in the chat, in the Q and A function.
Thank you, Michelle. So I'm looking at the time and we have a lot of time for questions. So just as a reminder, because this came up before, everyone will receive a link to the webinar recording and the link to the PDF version of Dr. Zechner's slides. And once it's posted on our website, if you have any questions, we'd like on, for you to please include them either in the Q and A pod or in the chat box. So I have some comments here. Madeline Martinez writes, focus on reorganizing one room at a time in my apartment. Be intentional about scheduling it in my calendar. And I would agree with you, Dr. Zechner, to be intentional, 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 excuse me, about scheduling time to do something that we enjoy.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I love that. Like to, to, you know, that sounds, it, it sounds like a great idea to be intentional, to be planful. Next time, I think we're probably gonna be talking about this idea of whoop. And maybe we've talked about it before. But that's wish, outcome, obstacle and plan. And it's, there's a great website, Whoop My Life, W O O P. And it's really where you sort of set this intention, like what you wanna do, any challenges. Like so, just using this example of, of scheduling time on the calendar, like that might be the wish. And then the outcome would be that you'd feel more creative and be more in touch with flourishing. And then the obstacle, I, I don't wanna assume, but for me, when I put things on my calendar that are personal, that are like, yeah, all about me, I, that's the first thing that I often drop, which is not a, not a good habit. But that could be a potential obstacle to that sort of time for oneself. And so how would you overcome or how could I overcome that obstacle of make, you know, if I put it in my calendar, making a commitment that it's for me, and then I'm finding a plan that to make it work, you know, maybe a certain kind of time of day is more likely that I'm not going to drop it off my calendar. Or maybe a certain day of the week, I'm more likely to remind myself. Or for, you know, maybe I need to couch the reminder in a way that's really motivating for me. So these are all, you know, different ideas, but I love the idea of reorganizing as a way to be creative. And I wish I had that skill. That's a marketable skill. Any other questions or thoughts about creativity?
Oh, someone also shared here that they love the possibility of creativity because it allows them to see the possibilities when we feel stuck. And I, and I would have to agree. It's in the midst of difficulty when you have that space. For some people, it, it comes maybe quicker than others to come up with creative solutions. What would you say about that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, I think, I think everyone feels stuck at certain times. And creativity is, is really a way to help get unstuck from, from these places. Like literally thinking about, that, that was really interesting for me, thinking about creativity as a cognitive process and not necessarily as making art, you know, that being, having that adaptability in our thinking is really, really important. And that can help us with problem-solving. It can help us with, with thinking and memory and all of these different elements as well. So Katy.
Yeah, Dr. Zechner, I have just one last comment. Could you maybe expand a little bit on, I know you mentioned different ways of being creative because when people hear the word creative, they think artistically creative. But there are other ways to express creative force.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll give you, you know, I think we had some great examples in the chat. So there were people who were crocheting and knitting and baking bread. I personally, my, my creativity is in finding pictures for PowerPoints. Isn't that really sad and weird? But yes, that, that's mine. And I think it really is whatever you feel, whatever brings you a sense of peace and joy. Yes, if you like to cook or bake, trying new recipes, absolutely. It might mean if you like movement, you try a new class. Like if you're a diehard Zumba person and then you try, you know, Mia or yoga you maybe you get jump on the elliptical. It's just trying something different than you normally do. It could even mean just walking down a different street and then noticing your surroundings. Really look at it with naive eyes. I think that's another important point is see yourself as seeing it for the first time. What can you see? What do you notice about it? That can really also help shake loose some creative concepts.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for joining us. On your screen right now, you see, you will see a QR code for our short evaluation survey. If you could please take a moment to either hover over with your mobile device to take our short survey. Again, we are a SAMSSA-funded technical, technical assistance and training center. As part of receiving this funding, we are required to evaluate our training events. If it's easier, you, you can also access the survey by clicking the link that I also provided in the chat box for you. So we hope to see you at our next flourishing at work session. And on your screen, you also see our toward wellness and recovery podcast channel. Dr. Zechner, would you like to share a little bit about?
That has been the most fun thing. It's a companion to the series. The topics are loosely the same, but the content is very different because I'm talking to my, my friend, Dr. Tony Zipple, who's a positive psychologist and he's amazing. I think, I think they're a lot of fun. I've had a lot of fun making them. So I encourage you to check them out because they've been a lot of fun. They're, they're on our website. They're also on Spotify, Apple Music and Podbean. And here are some resources about creativity and flourishing. I really love all of, all of these resources and thinking about play, the idea of play or giving yourself some rest and relaxation time to explore the things that you enjoy is really, really important to your own sense of flourishing and well-being. Got some references, which will be available in the slide sets. And then, of course, if you wanna connect with our center, there's our information. You can go to our website and check out some of the movement videos that, that we have posted. We've got a whole page, right? Katy, on, on provider well-being, for helping professions. And there's a whole list of tools of things for flourishing and resilience building.
Yes, please be sure to check out our webpage and under the tab Provider Wellness. And you'll find the resources that Dr. Zechner had mentioned. So again, we wanna thank you for joining us today. Thank you, Dr. Zechner. And we hope to see you at our next training event. We hope you enjoy the rest of your day. Thank you and be well.